I think we probably have all that's gonna join. Um, so we'll go ahead and get started with the finance subcommittee meeting. On March twentieth at five thirty. Um, so I thank everybody for being here, just so we make sure that we know everyone. Can we just unmute and? Like say our names. And I mean unmute that. Sorry, guys. We'll start. Lieutenant Sheen.
Lieutenant Sheen from the Springfield Police Department Metro Division. And here to talk about the co-response and the jail diversion program. Uh, being operated out of Metro Division.
Thank you. Captain Keenan.
Hi, Captain Brian Keenan, Springfield Police Firearms Investigation Unit, here to discuss the anti-heroin grant.
Thank you. And Lindsay.
Lindsay Hackett, Deputy Capo.
And Chris.
Chris Signoli, DPW Director.
And I think we know all the counselors, but if you guys wanna say your names, you sure can go ahead right now. You're muted, counselor.
Counselor Walsh.
Yeah.
Counselor Galvan.
Yeah.
Counselor, click Bruce.
Thank you. All right, so we'll go ahead and get started with the agenda items. Um, the first one is Department of Mental Health. Jail Arrest Diversion Program, um, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and ten thousand no match. Lieutenant, you have the floor.
And thank you very much. So, beginning this time last year, we applied for a Department of Mental Health grant. For a co-response. For BHN personnel to be dedicated to the city of Springfield. Uh, in responding to mental health crisis calls. The grant initially was submitted. For the, uh, for five clinicians to be dedicated. Uh, and, um. It would be covered by the Department of Mental Health and the clinicians would be solely dedicated to the city of Springfield. They'd respond to mental health crisis calls after officers were dispatched to. Calls and they would go there and they would try to divert. Any action as far as, uh, if they could. Uh, prevent the individual either from getting into involved with the criminal justice system. Or being diverted to the emergency, uh, room or emergency departments. So, that's the goal of the jail diversion program is to get out in front of these mental health crises that come along. And attempt to just, uh. Not overwhelm the justice system and the, the. The health, uh, system that we have. Due to the increasing amount of sa- psychiatric calls that occurring. So, we initially. Uh, requested funding for five BHN clinicians. Or master, masters level clinicians. The grant was eventually, uh, reviewed by the Department of Mental Health. They met us halfway. They provided funding for three clinicians. And, uh. Approximately a hundred thousand dollars each plus administrative costs and such. And, uh, the final paperwork, which took a while with a lot of back and forth. Uh, to occur, uh, has finally been settled that approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's prorated from March first to June thirtieth. At which time another grant application will be submitted. And either BHN will, based on the statistics. For this quarter. Will either increase the funding for another one or two clinicians. Keep it the same or possibly reduce it. The consensus seems to be that there probably will be an increase at the very minimum. They'll maintain three. In the meantime, BHN is also in a good faith effort is, uh. Going to be providing BHN clinicians on their, uh, on their own to Springfield to. Uh, supplement the three clinicians that are here. So, where there's, uh. Where the three clinicians aren't scheduled to work, we'll have coverage that will be dedicated to Springfield. So, uh, BHN is working with us closely on that. So, the, uh. The funding is for that. We also have our CIT training that we attend. We have over a hundred officers have attended the CIT training. They're still employed. A lot of retired, so it's a constant flow. It's a forty hour class. Provided by Behavioral Health Network. And it just teaches officers how to respond. And, um, in a way that's better suited. To help the individuals that are su- suffering the mental health crises and. And, uh, the, once again, uh, sort of get a different, um. Different way of dealing with them in which we can keep them out of the. Criminal justice system and possibly keep them out of. The healthcare system and divert them into the mental healthcare system.
Thank you. And CIT is crisis intervention? Perfect. Um, I think it's a great program. Glad that the funding was awarded. Um, definitely always needed. And I don't, I don't know if you said this, but. Um, if there's calls made, will the. Clinicians always have, um, beliefs with them?
So, how we do it here in Springfield is. The clinicians ride by themselves for a majority of the time. However, we do. Have some programs where they will ride with officers. Uh, if we have the proper funding for it. It's a sort of a, a separate detail and. Called Project Hope last year where they would actually ride with officers, two officers and the clinician. And they go out and do homeless outreach and because there's overlap between mental health homelessness and. Substance abuse addiction. That was a program that was done last year. We don't, unfortunately, we don't have funding this year for it. Uh, we're gonna attempt to get some other funding for that. So, the general course of action during a regular. Dispatch call for a mental health. Call somebody in crisis. Or if an officer responds to a call where it's determined that the individual is in crisis. BHN will be summoned. They'll be dispatched to go to that location after the scene is secure. Once the scene is secure and there's no threats whatsoever for the physical safety of the. BHN employee, clinician, uh, that's when they, they, uh, make their approach and, and attempt to, uh. Uh, help the situation out and, uh, and. And get the diversion process started.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Counselor Galvan did that.
Yes, thank you very much, um. Chairwoman, um, Whitfield. So my, my question, I guess, is two questions. So, there's two different grants, right? The, um, one where that you have the three clinicians that are going to be, um. Using that, that first grant you talked about. Is there going to be a clinician on each shift?
So, the determination based on the Department of Mental Health. Uh. Recommendation of guidance what we have to follow is. They look for the busiest times. So, we have split shifts. We have two working, sometimes we have two people working a shift. Uh, we have somebody working from eight PM to four AM. You have somebody working from three PM to eleven. So, there's some overlap. Depending on the busiest hours. And there's also day clinicians where there's a lot of need for just during the daytime. Where we see a little bit of gap is on the weekends. Uh, just because of, uh, you only have three clinicians. If we had four or five, maybe we'd be able to do that. That's why BHN is making the commitment to provide other clinicians at. That masters grade level that will augment and, uh. And backfill the. Lack of clinicians or the need for more clinicians during the times that are considered slow, but they're still busy.
Right, right. Okay, thank you for that. And then the, um, the CIT training. Um, how do officers go through that training? How, um, does everyone, when they first join the, um. The police force go through it or how does that happen? And how often does it happen after that?
So, the CIT training is a forty week course that is. The, the officers are chosen. Basically on a. Who, whoever needs it and is available. A lot of it's just scheduling through. Uh, the squads, if they have available time and depending on when the training is. Sometimes in the summertime, you just don't have the availability to get officers from squad because of manpower shortages. So, we'll take it from various bureaus and such. And we, we have six officers going next week and we took some from. Community policing, some from ordinance or C three policing, some from ordinance, some from special victims unit. So, there's really no criteria per se, other than you haven't had it yet. So, um. You know, we try and get squad officers into it when we did that last training. So, it's, um, it's. There's no particular science to it. It's just, we gotta fill the seats and we find our best way to do it.
Okay, so you don't know how much of the police force has had the training or you might, right?
Uh, over a hundred have had the training. They're still employed. Some have retired, so we probably lost. Probably lost around thirty or forty that have retired. And, um, we have over a hundred. We're sending six next week. There's multiple classes going through. And it's gonna be an ongoing process. They look, the Department of Mental Health. Looks to have, uh, they wanna have at least thirty department, thirty percent of the department, I think is what I've read in their material. Uh, at least trained. So, but the more we can get trained, the better.
I agree. I agree.
But it's, it's, um. W- we have such a, um, high turnover and just everybody's, um, and, and. Now, they do get training and service training. There is some mental health components that they do do. Uh, that, that do occur. And I believe they do that also in the academy. So, this, this is additional to. What's provided by the criminal justice training.
So, so within the academy, do they get any, um, crisis intervention training or de-escalation training?
I believe they do, but I, I'm not sure. They just changed a lot of that stuff. I don't know what the new, um. Training is, but I, I would say that they probably do, but it's not my field.
Right, right. Okay.
I did have it in the, uh, in the academy, the, uh, weekly and service training around three years ago. So, we, we, I know, I know they do cycle it through.
Okay. I th- I just think it's very important that. Every officer, you know, have that training, um, and be able to respond. Cause you never know, you know, who's gonna respond to what. So, thank you for that. And I'm, I'm certainly in support of this grant. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you, Counselor. I know you're not feeling good. So, thank you for. You know, extending your voice to voice that. Appreciate it. Um. Any other questions from counselors?
Uh, yeah, I have my hand up, uh.
I didn't see it. Thank you. Counselor Walsh.
Yes, and I agree with, uh, my colleagues. This is a wonderful program and, um, I'm happy you got the grant and wish it was for more, but, um. I'm a little confused. So, the, the. Do these people work for the, in the police department or do they work for? I mean, where are they located?
So, they're located out of the metro office down on Dwight Street. Uh, we have desk form down here. They operate basically, uh. Uh, do their paperwork here after they respond to a crisis call. They come here, they do the reports that they're, they have to do. And, uh, there's also. The dispatch center up on Roosevelt Ave through, uh. They've also made a, a place for them so they can do paperwork up there. Say for the midnight shift, uh. BHN clinician, uh, he likes to go up there and, and do his paperwork. So, the, the dispatch is another integral part. Of this association between the clinicians and law enforcement and dispatch. So, um, now they, they don't work for us. We manage the grant. Grant comes into us, provides us. The amount to, um. Uh, give to BHN to backfill their positions. So, we're the managers of the grant. So, we, we're deciding. We're, we're, we're shaping it. We're making sure that it meets Springfield's. Uh, requirements as a department and. Uh, BHN is, you know, basically, we're providing them. The, um, the back, back funding for their, their physicians.
Okay, but so not physically in the police, um, Pearl Street, there are other places.
Yes, they, they mainly operate out of the metro unit. And like I said, they have desks down here. They're, they got computers. And this is, they, they have paths to come in. Uh, they're Cory checked and. Uh, they, you know, they, the idea is to get a working relationship so they don't feel. Uh, so there's a working relationship between the clinicians and officers. And that's part of it. We have a great, great working relationship with all the clinicians here. They've been here. Lieutenant Elliot and Lieutenant Brian Elliot started this program a couple of years ago and. Uh, developed a great relationship over the three years. He was there with them. And then it came in a year ago and, and, uh, kept the program going and eventually got this grant. Uh, so they're dedicated here and, uh. That's, that's where we stand.
Yeah, yeah. Wonderful program. I, I will support it also. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Lieutenant. We definitely appreciate it. Uh, the next item. No problem. The next item on the agenda is cops anti-heroin task force program grant, an increase of ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, Captain Keenan here to speak on that, Counselor.
Yeah.
So, um. Basically, we've been participating in this all year long. The state police got a three point nine million dollar grant from the Department of Justice to combat heroin and fentanyl. In the Commonwealth. So, we've received twenty thousand dollars thus far. And they, they're giving, they're offering another ten thousand dollars to keep this going. I can tell you with the last investigation, uh, Detective Lieutenant O'Toole, you met last month, Counselor. We had some real success, uh, as a result of working in conjunction with that grant. The last investigation, we see the approximately, we seized approximately nine point five kilograms of cocaine. Uh, approximately eleven thousand two hundred plus two kilos of heroin and fentanyl, eighteen pounds of marijuana, thirty eight, twenty eight grams of fentanyl pills. Hundred and four thousand in cash. Three handguns and, um, six vehicles. So, that, those were seized in Springfield and Holyoke. Majority in Springfield.
Uh, is that just this year?
That's in the last two months, three months.
Wow.
It, it, it works out well, the, the holistic approach, working with the other agencies countywide, because we're finding that. Heroin and fentanyl dealers in particularly, they, they tend to deal in one city and keep their drugs and their money in another to make it difficult for law enforcement to detect them. So. This, this grant makes it possible for us to allocate Springfield police officers on an overtime basis with the state picking up the tab for, to participate in those investigations.
Oh, this is when you brought the, um, um, state trooper to the city. Okay, yeah, this is a great program, definitely. And he's from here. So, he knows the area and everything. So, that's great. Any questions on this increase?
No. Good idea.
Yeah, thank you for the great work and, you know, keeping the community as safe as possible and taking these drugs and guns off the street.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, um, item is order authorizing expenditure of FY twenty four, chapter ninety fund of three million, six hundred eleven thousand, one hundred dollars and sixty cents.
Uh, Chris Signoli, DPW Director, this is our annual allotment from the state for our chapter ninety money. Um. In working with the Mass Municipal Association, I'm, I, I, the word that I'm using at this point is probably disgusted with what has been given to us by the state. Um, and as I mentioned last time, our legislators actually voted down an increase in chapter ninety. Uh, so we are stuck at three point six million dollars. This year, uh, we have about seven million dollars in bond funds. Uh, that we are, we put out a paving program. It is out to bid in two weeks. Uh, and we will supplement that with, uh, chapter ninety money. And in the package that was submitted, uh, we have a listing of all the streets that we're gonna be doing for, uh, for next year. Or excuse me, for starting for, uh, probably May first, June first of this year. And rolling into next year. Uh, we're, we're putting aside two point eight million dollars for roadway work. Uh, five hundred and sixty thousand for design. A hundred and fifty thousand for, um. Uh, crack ceiling and a hundred thousand dollars for traffic signal equipment throughout the city. So, that makes up our use of the three point six million dollars.
I wish I'd known this earlier, Chris. I didn't read it till later because I was with some of those state legislators earlier and I would've said, why did you vote it down?
Yeah, that was, they, they have not gotten this year's yet, but last year's supplemental budget. Uh, they could have added fifty percent and they elected not to. I don't know the reason why, but. Uh, and that obviously at the state level, they were. Talking about infrastructure yet, you know, basically let, left us where we are. So.
Yeah, I think it's important for city counselors to know that because, um, I think it's. Part of our duty is to advocate for more funding on the local level, from the state and federal level. Um, like I said, I wish I knew earlier because I was with like three of them. So, um. But we will, we have individual meetings coming up, so I will definitely ask why they would, um, vote that down. And, um, this doesn't have anything to do with sidewalks because they were saying that Springfield got so much money in sidewalk repairs and they were saying that.
We got nothing from the state. The state does not give us a penny for sidewalks.
Well, maybe it's coming down the pipe because they were very.
There is no, they've given us zero money for sidewalks. I've heard that a bunch of times and every time I talk to one of them, I'm like, I'm not sure where you're getting your information, but. Zero money for us for sidewalks from the state level because it's something that's not supported. I can't, I can't use chapter ninety on it unless I'm doing the street. So.
Yeah, because they were like, they're gonna send a bunch of contractors to you to try to figure out how to get, um, contracts to do the sidewalks from you. So, I was like, oh, they got a lot of. Okay, Counselor Galvan, is your hand? I don't know. I can't really see this screen. I gotta, um, use this computer.
I'm sorry. Oh, thank you so much, Chris, um, for that. And, um. I agree with Counselor Whitfield that, you know, the state legislatures, we need to make sure we talk to them about. Um, increasing any type of funding that we, we need, you know, here in the city. So. I'm also going to be talking to some of the legislatures up at the state and make sure that this year, they vote for the. The, the correct way, I should say.
Well, the other, the other item I wanted to mention in the, this year's notice that we got, they're actually doing a two-year bill. So, we would get the exact same money next year.
Wow, that's terrible. Okay. All right. Well, I'm gonna make sure, um, I put pressure on them. To make sure that for the following year, I guess, we get what we need to get. Thanks a lot, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you, Counselor. And just for clarification, I see your hand, Counselor Walsh, this time I do. But Chris. Um, so the three point six million that we currently got is gonna be the exact same next year that was already approved?
Correct. They did it as a, they're doing it as a two-year bill. So, for fiscal twenty four and for fiscal twenty five.
Okay. All right. Thanks for letting us know. Um. We could, we still have time though, right? Because the, the budget hasn't passed yet for FY. Wait a minute, wait a minute.
No, it has not passed. It's still, it's still, uh, going through the legislature. Uh, however, every year, but what usually happens is the governor recommends a bigger number. The legislature cuts it. This year, the, like, the governor requested the two hundred million statewide. So. That's what leads to the three point six. That three point six number for us in two hundred million has been that number since two thousand and eleven. It has not.
Two thousand and eleven?
Two thousand and eleven. There's been, there was two years where Governor Baker through supplemental budgets gave us some more money. Uh, that, but enough that the actual chapter ninety has never increased.
Well, thanks for letting us know. I don't think I ever known that, Chris. So, thanks for letting us know because it would be brought up in my individual conversations and Counselor Galvan, as she said. Counselor Walsh? Um, you have the floor.
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, Chairwoman. Uh, so, Chris, I was gonna ask you, um. What the, what the difference in funding was, how, you know. What you, what you were used to and what you didn't get. How much of a difference is it?
No, we've been getting the three point six. However, over the past year. All we heard from, uh, Governor Healy when she came in is that she was gonna tackle infrastructure. And then they made a recommendation and it's basically stayed the same. Now, it's going through the legislative process. So. You know, uh, communities obviously like us and, you know, communities, especially through the Mass Municipal Association. You know, uh, were, uh, uh, I, I, I guess the word was they were surprised is the easy word shocked is probably the more better word. Uh, on that. So, um. You know, uh, the infrastructure money that was passed at the federal level. Exactly what happened when I said it was gonna been. It's all sucked up by the state and they're initiating projects all over the place on their own.
Well, that's too bad for us. That's sure. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Um, any other? Any hands? So, we'll move to the next item is bills of a prior year from Department of Public Works for a thousand sixty five hours.
You want me to take it, Lindsay, since you're sleeping?
Um, considering it's from your department, yes, why don't you?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Your honor.
Uh, yeah, bill for a prior year, four thousand, uh, sixty five dollars. Uh, work was done at the landfill for hazardous material in June of twenty two. Uh, bills that we received from the vendor were screwed up for months and months and months. And finally, we got a corrected bill. Uh, so we need to pay it for fiscal year twenty twenty two.
All right, makes sense. Any questions, comments?
No.
All right. Next, um, item is a hundred and twenty five dollar donation for the elders department.
Yes, this is a donation of a hundred and twenty five, uh, a hundred and twenty five dollars from Anna Page. For specifically the Raymond A. Jordan Senior Center.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Well, we wanna thank, um, Ms. Page for her donation. Always welcome. Um, order of taking of permit and temporary easement for St. James' Avenue Tapley Street. Um. Project a hundred and thirty two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Yep, the, uh, Massachusetts DOT about three years ago initiated a project for the intersection reconstruction. Of Tapley and St. James Street. Um, the work is ready to go out to bid in May. Uh, we have twenty seven different easements, five takings. Five partial property takings. There are no full takings. Three properties for lighting easements, two properties for highway sign easements. And cemetery, se- excuse me, seventeen temporary construction easements. Uh, for a total of a hundred and thirty two dollars. A hundred and thirty two thousand dollars, excuse me. Uh, the work at the, uh, Tapley and St. James intersection is actually gonna be roundabout. So, uh. It, it'll be interesting to say the least, but, uh, the property takings. Uh, minimal, minimal widening, you know, the, the takings that we're talking about. There's this property on the corner, Sprague. Uh, where the oil tanks are. They're the one property that is being impacted the most. Um, on this and all of the others are, you know, hundred, uh, you know, less than a hundred square feet of impact to. Properties along the way and all the construction easements are basically for construction of sidewalks.
You know what I like, Chris, that you guys are doing the construction at night because I live over there, like right on Cuthbert Street, Cuthbert Ave. And it happened that night, but you said it's gonna go out to bid, but I see stuff going on right now. So, what is happening and what's going out to bid?
What's out there now, they're actually doing some preliminary work on the bridge on Tapley Street over two ninety one. That is gonna end up getting replaced. The bridge on St. James over two ninety one is going to get replaced. And the bridge on St. James Avenue that's over the abandoned rail line by Albany Ave is also gonna be replaced. So, as I said before, the state's doing all these projects. You know, while some of them in our community, very happy about to get those done. Uh, but there is, uh, going to be, it, it's going out, that project is gonna be going out to bid. Uh, in, in, um, I believe early May. Uh, so hopefully they'll be starting construction on it or, uh, later this year.
Okay, and the roundabout, Chris, I'm just trying to picture it because when I come off the highway exit four, right? I hate that light is, I mean, that stop sign because the light is never green when we go through the stop sign. So, I don't know. It never makes sense. There's never traffic, but we stop anyway. Um, n- never too many stop signs. So, where exactly, is the roundabout gonna be in that area?
The roundabout is actually gonna be at the intersection of St. James and Tapley where the. Yeah, Irving, Irving, I think it is gas station with the Dunkin' Donuts. Uh, so it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be right at the intersection. So, the intersection is actually a. Geog- geometrically pretty big. So, the roundabout's just gonna fit right in the middle of it.
Oh, you really slowing them down over there. Good work.
Absolutely.
Cause they be speeding over there.
Yeah, get those people on the other side of the bridge, you speed.
But, well, thank you for that. Um. So, the next item is the appropriation order. So, first you gotta do the order of the taking and then the appropriation?
Uh, I believe it's vice versa. Uh I believe it's vice versa.
Vice versa, okay.
Uh we got to do the taking, then the appropriation. Thank you. Yes, so that's uh we do one before the other.
Okay, so that's the um number seven.
Yep.
Any questions, guys? And gals? All right, I think we're all set um for the finance subcommittee meeting and I definitely um support everything on here. Especially the Saint James stuff because it's right by my house. Um so we'll see you all at seven.
Thank you very much. We'll see you at seven.
Right, thank you.